Yeah, I'm glad everybody got in. So and yes, we are recording. I'm sure most of you know, but there's YouTube's of all the council meetings. They have their own YouTube channel and a lot of several of the other committee meetings too, which is kind of handy because you can fast forward through all the boring parts and get the highlights without sitting up there for hours. Anyhow, well, uh, I'm sure it comes as no surprise that we're on Zoom. So I sent out to everybody the agenda. Let me pull it up here.
Please also bear with me. Um, I will try to take notes like I have in the past. But if there's any, I, I wasn't able to transpose everything. Um, actually, let me go run downstairs and get the hard copy of the agenda. So bear with me, but I will, you know, be happy to attempt my best at taking notes.
Okay. I tried to share. Do you all see this agenda on your screen?
Yes.
Got it.
Cool. But you probably all got it already.
Yeah.
We'll wait a minute for Chuck to get back and then start.
Done. We'll have to get a little music on hold.
Why am I only seeing? Oh, I know where I need a gallery view. There we go.
See, I wonder if.
It's only seeing three.
All right.
Okay, you're back. All right. Well, it's now 7:33. Let's officially start the meeting. And we can begin with, let me change my my screen sharing to different document. And I guess we can begin with the pledge allegiance. Can you guys see the flag there?
Nice. Nice touch.
Very cool.
But we won't be in sync because when both of it, when we all talk at once, none of us will hear anybody, but that's all right. I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Invisible.
Invisible. And liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. We've got Chuck, Seer, Matt, Bob, Richard. Stephanie's not here. I'm here. And our most important audience guest is here as well.
Resident.
Okay. Couple thing on the Yes?
Oh, good.
Yep. On the community announcement side, uh, as most of you know, with COVID getting wild again, I think the borough office is pretty much closed. Uh, you gotta reach out to Patty, Paul, excuse me, via email and phone and stuff. I mean, they're functioning, but they're not, don't want the public in there. And there was some noir lighting tonight, I assume. At this time, if there's any, uh, we'll open up the public comment. If people want to comment on anything that's not on our agenda down below. I think Pete's the only public person in here. I don't know if there's anyone else.
What if I may?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
As a resident, I, I want to just thank everybody. Each and every one of you guys for the last two years. I've been working with many of you for almost 10 years with the planning commission. Uh, but the, and as the last few two years, I appreciate your vote of confidence as, as chairperson. Your input has been invaluable. And it shows because we are constantly having to influence and, and work through each of these processes that we're, we're working on now with the 10 year plan. And we provide advice to the council that I know that they look forward to reading and hearing very, very often. So I just wanted to thank you guys for all your, your support during the last two years.
Really want to thank you, Pete, for your excellent job and, you know, all the effort you've put into everything. Above and beyond, you know, even going to council meetings.
Right.
Hearing board meetings.
Tried my best to get a well-rounded view of what is occurring in the borough. And I think that's the only way to really understand the planning side of the house, since we are supposed to plan and think about five, 10, 15 years in front of, of everybody else.
Yeah. Yep. No, we'll miss you.
You're gonna miss it, Pete.
Well, hopefully I'll be able to stay in touch, uh, since I really have no idea where I'm going to be moving to. I'll probably be, I could be homeless in February.
We won't get that app.
All right. Thank you.
Pete, um, uh, I would like to, um, thank you very much for everything that you've done. And, um, I don't know if we need to have a, uh, uh, vote on this or not. But I would like to let the record show that, um, of us giving you a standing ovation for your wonderful job. You can't, you can see my best side in the dark, so I'm congratulating you very much. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And you're more than welcome to come and visit anytime you want.
I, I will try.
Wherever you are. I, I have a feeling we'll be at least another three months probably in Zoom, in Zoom land. I wouldn't.
Oh, I would expect also. Yeah.
Which makes it easy to attend. Okay. Let's move on. We have no applicants this month, luckily. And the next thing is the, the minutes I, I sent them out earlier today. Let me pull them up here.
And Chuck, if I misinterpreted any of your, uh, your writings in these minutes, please let me know.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm still trying to cut and paste.
Did everyone get a chance to, to take a look at them and see particularly make sure that, uh, all the things that we discussed relative to the Robert Wiley case clearly are represented in, in this, in here as to what our position was. I think it was from what I read, but are others okay with it?
Yeah. Yeah, I have no, no, take no exception.
Okay, then I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve. Go ahead.
Pete, real quick, uh, did you put in the actual, um, what we actually voted on and, you know, the word and everything, or is that further down?
You mean the recommendation to council?
Yeah.
Well, reason, reasons based for the denial down here in the motion. Yes, down here.
Okay.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Now, I did not want to send these out to council until they were approved in your.
Right. Yeah, exactly. I told Paul the same thing. I said, but you'll get them right away afterwards. So.
Okay.
Okay, Doug, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Call favor. All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, our minutes are approved. Okay, moving on. I, I actually, uh, did, was able to see the, the council last meeting, which I guess was a week ago Tuesday. Couple of things of note, uh, that they talked about the canal elevation project, you know, where they're elevating the path, not the canal itself, the path. Over near the Pico lot there, that's all complete. But what it made them do because they're going to, because they're trying to bid on buying the Pico lot is now they had to pay money to get it resurveyed because, you know, you need new pins now that the height has changed. So the council approved doing that for a new survey to support the Mary Yardley Bridge project. And then what they've directed, uh, what they have directed Paul to pull together and they're going to be sending out is a, is an offer letter for the Pico lot for if I think it's 55,000 contingent on them being able to get the grant money that they're applying for. So we'll see where that goes. That, other than that, the other, the couple of other things that happened at council is is well, the, the next meeting, which is next Tuesday, is when they'll be voting on the budget. It's kind of sticker shock, in my opinion, 16% increase for mills.
How much?
Four mills, 16%, 16.4% increase. So and two mills, two mills is for capital projects and then two mills for everything else. So.
Hey, Don.
Yes?
Sorry, just to go back to the Pico lot, was there any discussion about what the borough's intentions are for that property once they have purchased it?
Not really. They talked somewhat at a previous meeting, I remember about, you know, being sort of a trailhead, if you will, and, um, because I asked Paul the same question because I was like, how much money have we spent so far just to get this ready? You know, we spent money for appraisal. We're paying RV engineers to write up these letters. I think, I don't think there's going to be another buyer.
So just wondering if yeah, or if they planned to designate it open space or.
By right, I believe has to be declared as open space if we're going to get a grant. In a flood zone.
So those are the terms of the grant.
Yeah, sure.
The other thing, I even questioned if they don't get the grant or even why they want to own it at all.
I know.
Was, uh, you know, it becomes a liability. We just end up paying a lot to mow it and maintain it, ensure it or whatever. And we really control it anyhow because nobody can build on it.
I know.
So we kind of have control. We don't need ownership. We want, just want to have influence of what it becomes.
I know.
We have several other lots in town already that, uh, we're not even, we're under utilizing. We own two of them right down the street from the Pico lot. One of them is the community garden, which gets well-used. But the other lot is on the corner is vacant except for Carvathon. And that's it. And that's a trailhead also, you know.
Where, where's that one? At the corner of?
At the corner of, uh, Fold.
Morgan Maple.
Maple, Maple and, uh, and Morgan.
Oh.
And.
The old Zidzik property. But the thing about that, the only actual thing that they, that, uh, they have there actually, Matt, because I think two years ago, they actually shifted the Carvathon down to the Pico lot. Uh, the only thing that really is at the old Zidzik property is one of those pop-up, uh, you know, little library things.
Yeah, for the books, there's a little thing you could put, put a, put and take a book out. And that's.
Yeah, but, but that's it ultimately.
It's not even a Carvathon anymore. So, you know, and plus they have, uh, the field, you know, the summer's field there for whatever we needed an event for. I don't think they should put any money into that. I mean, it's, we're already raising taxes like, you know, and they blew through all the money from Yardley Walk that they made. And that's why our taxes are going up. And that's why they bought five police cars and everything because they, they had a bucket of money they had to spend. And, uh, and now it's, you know, it's not coming in anymore. And, um, so now it all falls back on the residents.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. So, um, so anyhow, so I don't know what's going to happen with this Pico, Pico lot. The other, the one good thing though, that they did, the solicitor did tell them to put into the letter, or maybe it was RV to make sure that they, uh, that the seller has to do a phase one.
Yeah. That's going to ask. Any environmental, uh, impacts on the site from the transformers.
Yeah, I'd be nervous about PCBs down under there, you know, from years ago.
For sure, for sure. Matter of fact, even if we don't get it, they should probably require him to do a phase one. Either way.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
No, I think it needs to be done regardless.
Yeah.
And I think we should, uh, you know, maybe make that recommendation to council.
Yeah, if the property changes hands, that's a good point.
Doesn't change hands.
Oh, yeah.
I think so. I think they shouldn't leave it. They shouldn't be able to walk away without doing at least a phase one. You know?
Yeah.
Even if they, even if they don't sell it, it doesn't matter. There, you know, there's nobody there that's, you know, it's open. Kids could be playing in there and it needs to be, uh, surveyed that way.
Yeah.
There was, if I may, that there was mentioned that one of the reasons for purchasing this Pico lot would be to, uh, address the issue with FEMA and increasing our open space. And thereby maybe getting an extra percent or two discount, just so that that's in the background also. Whether or not we'll ever get to anywhere close to 10% because we simply don't have the space in the borough. But anyway, that was another issue that council was reviewing.
Yeah. That's, that's true. And that's the one that, that's one of the things they told me too. But, um, I know, uh, Richard was on the call. There was a seminar last, seminar, whatever. There was a event last night talking about the flood plane and, and there was a Zoom call. And Pete Toff, you know, from the insurance company there was going through, explaining to people how the insurance worked. And I guess these private insurance companies now are way cheaper. Uh, maybe you guys know this already, but way cheaper than, uh, where's the regular place to get it from? I forget.
The flood insurance program.
For insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
National flood insurance.
And, and, and these, these discounts that we get because of our scores there don't apply to the private insurance thing. They only apply if you go through the so, so if the, if the federal program is so much more expensive, then these percentage reductions don't do any good. It's reducing off a price that's much higher than you can get it in, in the private sector. At least that's what it sounded like to me. Did you, was that your takeaway, Richard, on that?
Yeah, no, that's what I heard too. Um, yep. I mean, they, they talked a little bit about what advantages are there for remaining with the national flood insurance program? The only thing that, um, Pete said was that if you, if you leave the program and you try to get back into the NFIP, you're at some disadvantage that it costs you to get back in. But, uh, it didn't really seem like that important an incentive.
Yeah. So, so anyhow, so I, I don't know how it'll, how it'll go down. I asked Paul to provide to me how much, all the money that's been spent so far on procuring the Pico lot and how much more they expect to spend in order to get it. So I just wanted to know that in case I decide to be noisy Tuesday night on the topic. Anyhow.
It'd be interesting to know too, how much they anticipate, uh, you know, spending on mowing it every, all year long, every year. You know, it's probably $50, $60 to mow it every, every week.
Yeah. The other thing that came up at council, of course, so besides voting on the budget, they did imply, I think, that at the next meeting too, they didn't necessarily say they're going to vote on, but they're going to go move further with the flood plain ordinance. So what that means, I don't know. But, uh, so that will be up for discussion next week as well, I think. All right. That was it for my takeaways from the council meeting. The only other thing we had on here on our agenda, it's been on for a few weeks, a few months, because we've had other things pop up, was the chapter review approach. I don't know. I, I looked a little bit at chapter five. It's a lot of descriptive of what our town's all, what our borough's all about, is what a lot of it was. But in terms of the, the master for the, for the, uh, tenure plan, Chuck, do you have, are you in possession of the master? That's been marked up with all the work that we've done all along, or is that? Or is that?
I, I thought, uh, the last, the last way we had it was that, um, I, I don't know if it's me that has it. I know I, I gave everything to Pete for the, a copy of the one that I was working on the most recent.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, we can, let me, let me just look in my, in my folder here. Hang on, living commission.
Chuck, the one that you have and the one that I have are the same. Because you, uh, we all marked them up. And then you sent me a copy of your markup. So I can resend that back out to you if you need to.
The one that, the one that looks like it's the most quote recent was Yardley Borrow Comprehensive Plan Modified 610 2020-CJD.
Yep. That's, that would be right.
Okay. So does anybody need another copy of it?
Yeah, because I don't think I have that one.
Do you want to check in, uh, if it went, well, Pete was the last one that sends it out to the entire group. So maybe if you want to double check on your email.
Yeah, let me check real fast here.
All right. And I do have a hard copy of the entire comprehensive plan that currently exists along with some other files that I'd like to send up to you, Don.
Yeah, that's fine. I can pick them up from you or something. So that was probably around, uh, Pete, what do you think the, the last time you sent that out was probably around?
Oh, uh, the end of June, maybe.
Oh, there, oh, there, I see one June 10th.
Yep, that's it. That's the one.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Second here. Let's see, where is it? I think it's this one. Share the screen. Okay, this is it.
Um, do you, do you other folks have that? Okay, great.
Let me go. This chapter starts at like page 79, I think it is. Where am I? Where's my page numbers? Oh, I opened the wrong one. Open the flood plain. Sorry, my bad, my bad. There were two things in that email, I think. There were two attachments, I think. Opened the wrong one. Hang in there for a second.
Yeah, I did the same.
Uh, once the flood point, which one is it?
I don't think it's the old fashioned one.
No, I don't see it from Pete.
There it is.
It's not it. It's been later than June 10th.
Yeah, I don't see it on the date.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see it now. Review of. Yeah, I don't think I, I don't think I have it. I got flood plain, flood plain.
I got a Word document from the, from March 2020. That's my hunch is that's it.
Let's minutes, minutes agenda. Oh, here we go. Comprehensive play update, May 2014. I've got one that was sent to it, but actually that seems too old because that was sent on February 26. That's the last one I have with comprehensive. Right, I guess the. Let me switch over to.
I think.
This is the most recent one that I had. But modified 611 2018. That's too long ago. I, I guess the question is, is how do we want to go after this chapter five in general? Do we want to do it as a group? Or do we want to say, all right, everybody take a couple pages and modify how they think it should modify, and then we review the, or just the changes? Or?
I, I think, uh, last time, okay, I'm, I, I'm sending out to everybody, uh, be on your, be on your email lookout, uh, the copy that I was just talking about. Again, it's dated June 10th, 2020. And as I opened it up, of course, the first thing I see is, uh, there are a number of names on Borough Council that have to be adjusted. Actually, there's a lot that has to be adjusted. Do we have an assistant borough manager now?
I don't think that's her title. There's like, there's like a finance, I don't think we have an assistant borough manager anymore.
Okay.
I don't think we do.
So right now you're looking at the comprehensive plan, chapter five?
About to get there. Hold on one second. About to get there. Hold on one second. Okay, now you should be seeing the. The version that's the. Version that Chuck was working off of, six, ten, twenty. But moving up to chapter five, I think it's down around page.
Forty-one. Yeah, forty-one-ish.
Chapter five, Community Facilities and Services.
Pages aren't changing.
Now. Since the first thing that they talked about is wastewater facilities.
Right.
I don't know if y'all are reading it right now or not. Yeah, wastewater facilities. It doesn't look to me like this is, you know, consistent with. What's going on because unless I'm mistaken, didn't Lower Makefield sell their. Did they sell the water or did they sell the sewer?
Sewer. But in August, they, they voted to do it. Okay, and now it's going through the Public Utilities Commission review of it. You know, so they voted to do it. But they haven't really done it yet. Supposedly that, from what I read, that's not, that that process will take till next summer before it's official. But they had the bids, they had two bids, fifty-three and million and fifty million, and they went with Aqua. I forget the Aqua something is the name of the company. And they're.
Okay, so ultimately, ultimately, though, then we have to change this verbiage.
Well, it has, has to be updated too with the latest, you know, the treatment plant upgrades and everything else.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
You think we should take a shot at this paragraph and then send it over to our friends at the sewer commission, tell them to make sure it's right? They live, sweep and breathe this stuff, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Really, this is really not on our pay grade to do the wastewater at all, actually.
I know. I, I, I think we should farm it out to them and say, hey. Tell us what what's changed in here. You guys fix it. It's your, it's your thing.
Yeah, I, I agree cuz it's. I really do. It's, it's a very complicated situation over there.
Yeah, because they're, they're doing, as probably many of you know, they're also doing. Upgrades, putting in bigger pipes up near us in Yardley Walk. They've got thirteen different. I don't know, I think it's twenty-one. It's either thirteen or twenty-one. Access assessment, access request to get space in to go do this upgrade. So, and that's in the works for next summer supposedly. So those are the kinds of things that they might wanna talk about. It's sized for so many. Like some of the things they said down here about these permits for connections, you know, down here. And capacity commitments, change of oxygen requires additional sewer commitments. Is that all still true? I don't know. This capacity enhancement project? I don't know what that is.
Yeah, seems like if we're gonna publish anything about this, we got some homework to do.
Yeah.
Or farm it out, as you say.
And just remember, guys, that this, this is an overview. And we don't have to get technical and down to the nitty gritty on this.
Yeah.
This is an overview, and it really only should be a few paragraphs. And then when a specific question comes in, then we refer to the sewer authority.
Right. That's true. But this connection management policy, the authorities adopted a connection management policy, and it permits the connection of. Only those projects, blah, blah, you know, all this stuff, those words in there. I don't know if that still applies. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. I don't know. That could be old.
It'd be very easy to maybe take this page. And sit in on a sewer authority meeting on a Wednesday night and just ask them real quickly, you know, does this apply, and if so. Do we have to change it? We could even copy and paste this and email it to them and ask them to do a quick review.
Yeah, see, I think that's better. You go copy and paste it in a doc, in a Word document by itself. And then tell them to. Update this to current. Status.
I like that plan.
Yeah. See, we get back.
Right.
Just asking for their input for the comprehensive plan coming up.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you copy and paste this sample of what we currently have, it'll give them something to work with.
Exactly.
And and they'll return, and you can ask them, you know, we're only looking for a couple paragraphs to fill in.
Yeah.
And the basics on this, nothing detailed.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's the best approach for that, I think.
Who's the chair of the? Do you know who the Chair of the Sewer Authority is now?
No.
Oh, but it's on the Borough website, says.
Yeah, we can find it.
I can find it.
It might be Rich Cole still, I don't know.
I don't know. Well, Rich is gonna be heading south if he hasn't already.
All right.
The water supply. I don't know, the water supply paragraph looks like. I don't think they think should change in there. I don't, it's still Pennsylvania American Water Company, and it just describes, you know. How it's serviced.
Yep.
I don't see any reason to make it more or less.
Anything new from the state water plan? That's a rhetorical question.
Do not have. About fire protection, is, are we still under the same deal for that?
I think so. You know, I just have one thing kind of not, it's gonna go into plan, but. Chuck, maybe you could even answer this. The, the fact that Sandy Run Road is closed off. Does that cut into the response time from the fire and the rescue squad getting to certain parts of the borough significantly? Or do they, coming down Edgewood Road or coming in down Afton? Same time, you know, do they lose anything?
You know, Matt, that's a good question. I would have to actually think that. It, while it may not be as much of a negative impact. To us getting services. I would have to think that it could be an endangerment for Lower Makefield residents. With having an added response time for, for a fire truck. If it couldn't, if it had to come from Main Street as opposed to up next to McCafferty's.
Oh, all right.
Because the trucks would have a hard time getting underneath that train bridge. In front of the golf course, right at Silver Lake.
Oh, just making the turns in there. Yeah.
And they'd have, yeah, they'd have to go, they'd have to go down Edgewood. And but, but an ambulance. Could negatively impact somebody that was up on Whiskey Hill.
Or even people who live on.
How's that?
You know, on Fairview and up that way, you know, if an ambulance had to come in. Anywhere on, on. I forget the name of the area just up where they built the condos or the water tower up in there, up College Avenue by the.
Yeah, College Avenue. Yeah, that's true.
Yardley Point.
Yeah, that whole area, that whole section, is that compromised significantly by having Sandy Run? Closed, you know, all those streets up in there. So that, that's, that's my only comment. If it ever comes up somewhere, we can address it. But it sounds like they wanna make that a cul-de-sac now and not fix it.
Well, I think they were saying, and it's been a long time, that. Because of the way the road curves. It's, it doesn't have enough visual front sight or, you know, extended, extended distance. And they'd have to soften that, the S-turn there.
Yeah, I know. So that, you know, I think they're thinking they're gonna get, Lower Makefield's gonna go the cheapest way. And that's gonna be just make a cul-de-sac and just cut us off. And, you know, I don't think it's, I don't like that idea, but that's, chances are that's what's gonna happen cuz we're not gonna have any input. And it's kind of our street, you know, that they're just cutting off.
I, I believe that street. Belongs one hundred percent to Makefield, all right?
Well. Depends where you started, I think. You know, Reading Avenue on, maybe it does. But they've cut off a big major access or egress. Either way, to the town. And then they may make it permanent. So.
I think that's worth discussing.
Yeah. I don't know. I think council needs to get involved with that. If they're, you know, I don't care what they do, if they're gonna just open it, however they do it. But if they're gonna close it off, I think that's a real. Negative and really something that we shouldn't, we should have an input, have at least a say on. They won't even ask us. They're just gonna do it, whatever they're gonna do. I'd like to see council get, take a more active role in that if they haven't already.
You're done. That makes, that may be worth actually writing a quickie letter. From the Planning Commission because they are supposed to coordinate between townships. On major issues like this.
Who's supposed to do that? The council?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so is Lower Makefield, but. Chances of that happening voluntarily are very slim.
If you remember behind the Wells Fargo Bank, that one little access road. That they denied on. Remember that?
Yeah, there were several back there. And it was from the bank and also out of the. Iron Horse Development, whatever they call that. The emergency access out of there, they denied that. It was even onto our road. It was Oxford Valley Road. That we own back there on our side. And they wouldn't allow access, having access there. They finally relented and let them put a chained up emergency one. But we wanted to have a regular egress out there, so people. Didn't, you know, if they wanted to go out and leave, they could go out the back of their development. But they wouldn't allow that. And then, you know, of course, when the, right there where that little bridge is. When that went down, they sued us, they sued the borough. Big time for a repair of that, which was not ours. And they wanted like a ten million dollar repair job instead of a two hundred thousand dollar repair job, you know? And we ended up going to court. Cost us a lot of money to, to fight that. So that's why, you know, everywhere you look around the borough, Yardley gets the short end of the stick from Lower Makefield. So I suspect it's gonna happen here on Stony Hill Road, as it has at Orchard Hill as well. Same thing happened there.
It just might be worth writing a letter from the Planning Commission to councils, simply stating that this is a concern and. Can we address it?
Yeah.
At least it doesn't go unaddressed.
That, that's, yeah, okay.
Okay, I wrote that down. Emergency services, is this all the same? I highlighted new, I was gonna take out new facility cuz Edgewood Road isn't a new facility anymore, I don't think, is it? So all this stuff about the emergency operations plan. I guess we gotta make sure that still exists. I assume it does, right?
Or has it been updated?
That's something that Wes would be working with.
Yeah.
You know, theoretically, I think all the council members are supposed to be up on that as well. I think when I was mayor, I had to do that. And we had to like actually get certified that we did it. And I don't know if they keep up with that anymore.
Well, this may be another one that. This emergency service paragraph, we should let Wes tell us if there's anything's changed.
Yeah. That would be good.
Can you be more happy to help us with this?
Why not? Yeah.
Sure.
Matt, would it be a good idea if we're gonna ask him that to also ask? For validation, as you said, about whether or not. The council members have taken whatever training might be necessary?
I guess it would be good to know that. I don't know that that's our purview, but. You know, stir, stir something up, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's not something that would go into the comprehensive plan, I don't guess.
Yeah.
No, but if we're already writing a letter to them.
Well, I don't know. Might be worth asking Wes if he knows if they're still doing it or something. Ask Paula. Paula would know, maybe.
Yeah, if there's trainings that the council people have to do, I'm sure she has to keep records of that, you know? Particularly when they've changed so many people on council last, through all the resignations and everything, you know?
Right.
At the very least, it may not be a bad idea to have Wes come and make a presentation to council. For ten minutes at a council meeting. Just to, you know, just bring them up to speed and make them aware it exists, and also the residents can, can listen in to.
Okay, moving on to police. Sorry, my, my Google guy's watching me. Listen, I must have said something weird. I must have said, okay. I just unplugged it, sorry. Relative to the police, obviously, this has changed. We don't have one. The, the number of people is a little different than what's in this paragraph.
Exactly, yeah.
But does that fall under the? Should we ask Paul to update that, or should we have to go to somebody else to update those words?
I think all we need to do is get, change the number of officers, and that's it, basically.
Oh, that's all that's changed? Okay. Cuz I'm, I'm not even clear how many part-times and how many full we have right now.
I don't either.
We're, we're up over ten total.
I think they have five full-time and I don't know how many part-time anymore.
It was about thirteen. It was about thirteen, plus or minus one. So we, within five years, we went from two full-time to what, five full-time?
Maybe more.
Went from eight part-timers to fourteen part-timers. Let's see auxiliary force.
Yeah.
Right, the auxiliary is separate, is it separate on top of that, right?
Yes.
So. That should probably be mentioned into here, what their role is.
Right.
Are they just brought in for big events, I assume? Is that basically what they use?
Parades, things like that, yeah, but I think we should get a, get a statement as to what they're, you know, they're. Parades, things like that. Yeah, but I think we should get a, get a statement as to what their, you know, their charter really is.
Yeah.
They could be brought in for, for any reason, once the police chief authorizes it.
Right. Relative to schools. Only thing I see on there that I know is wrong is St. Andrews doesn't have that childcare thing anymore.
Right, you can take that out.
Yeah. Is the Yardley Kids Academy thing still exists? I don't know. I'm not familiar with that one.
Don't know.
That's the one at the Legion.
Yeah.
Right. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's still there or not.
It's still there, whether there's open or not, I don't know, but the, you know.
It, it's still functional and operational. I believe their lease is up this year or next year.
Okay. Uh, I'm trying to get everything in here, guys. Bear with me for just a second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll slow down. Sorry.
While you're typing, do, did you wanna just talk about the borough sites?
Yeah, yeah, let's keep going, yeah. The library's obvious, okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I just needed to, I'm, I'm bouncing back and forth. I wish I had another screen.
Yeah. Okay, borough sites, these. I'm familiar with the Borough Hall, the Annex. What's the historical stone barn? Can somebody help me out with that? Where's that?
Behind the bike store.
Yeah, behind Firehouse Cycles.
Oh, it must be small, that.
Yeah, it, it was the hor, it was the horse barn.
Oh, cool.
For the firehouse?
Yeah, for the mules, yep.
Do we do just store junk there or something now?
Well, the bike store rents it and he stores his junk in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
With the Annex building, you know, number two there.
Yeah.
You know, that's been vacant for a long time. They're not getting the rent on it. I don't know what, what's going on, if anybody's even trying to do anything with that.
Currently, the Annex building down by the monument?
Yeah.
Is, is being occupied by our police and they're using it for storage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
In the, in the bays of the garage.
Alright.
And in fact, they're gonna put money into it as part of this two mills. Well, four mills increase because supposedly the windows up above, the dormers, windows there are all leaking in the ceiling and stuff.
Yeah.
It looks like it's falling apart.
Yeah. It does, it does look like it. It's legit, I think. Now, are there are there additional things that have come on here, like, like the Reading Avenue lot? Is that something that should be on here now or is that different? It's not a building, I guess.
Yeah, that, um.
It's a site though, it's a borough site property, right?
Yeah, under item three, it says, "Three open space sites include Buttonwood Park Community Garden."
Yeah.
You'll, you'll see that that should be added after Fitzgerald Field.
Yep.
Uh, we're trying to see. Where, where's? Under number three?
It's, no, keep going down below that, where it says three open space sites. Change that to four, right?
Five, really? They don't have the one at, uh, Morgan and, uh, that we were just talking about either.
Well, they say this, oh, Morgan Avenue Maple, that, oh, brown, okay, that's the garden, sorry, that's different, right?
Um, do they show the community garden?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they don't specify the other one that's on the corner of Morgan and Maple.
Zix, um.
We gotta add Reading Avenue to that. And maybe the possibility of the Pico lot too.
Yeah, by the time we get, by, by time this goes to press, yeah, the Pico lot will be. Who's, who knows, we'll see.
You could just say that we're in, in, the borough's in the process of negotiating a fifth property or whatever on, uh, Morgan and Fold.
And then this is a plan, so there's nothing wrong with putting in anticipated, uh, plans for the future.
Right.
Okay, you caught up with this? Okay, good. Places of worship. Uh, we gotta edit to St. Andrews again to take out the childcare facility, but.
Wait, did you read it? I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's in there. See, it says, "St. Andrews Episcopal Church is located on Long West Avenue, north side of the street in association with a childcare facility and a cemetery." Just saying association with a cemetery.
Yep.
And I don't know about this Yardley Community Center. Is that home to this believers fellowship?
Yeah, yeah.
Still all functioning?
Yeah, there's a, and there's some others too, from time to time that rented. I'm on the board of that community center. So, yeah, that's still going on.
Okay.
Well, they may not be having services because of COVID now, but they're, uh, it's, they're not leaving, you know?
Should there be a distinction for that community center? Maybe it says places of worship. But the community center is, might need its own paragraph because it is used for the community and also services are provided in there. Because it, it's, it's not 100% a place of worship. Should the community center have its own little paragraph?
Wouldn't be a bad idea actually to have that, uh.
Yeah, I think so. And, and even indicated that, you know, it's used for, uh, church, house of worship at times, plus isn't, well, you know what all things, they're like dance studio. Pre-COVID, there was a lot of stuff going on there, right?
They have, they have, they used to have the antique show. They had the 40th July concerts. And, and we run it out. I mean, anybody can run it for a party, as long as there's no alcohol.
Right. Like we Yardley Walk, for our annual meeting, one year we had it in there because we have a lot of people have to come vote at their annual meeting. We rented it from there once.
Okay.
No, that's not a borough facility, is it?
No, it's private.
Privately owned, yeah.
So I don't know that that's really part of the comprehensive plan. It's an asset to the borough.
Yeah.
But it's not a borough asset per se, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah, but we aren't. Neither are these churches and a lot of other things that we mentioned here, you know? I, I think, I think it should have its own little paragraph because it's, it's, it's an asset, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think if I may make a suggestion, is that the Yardley Community Center, and it should be noted that it is not owned by the borough, but it's a private entity within that paragraph. So that no one arbitrarily or incorrectly thinks that it's owned by the borough.
Alright, good point.
You know, Yardley, Yardley Community Center privately owned in parentheses.
Okay.
But available for rent and is often used as, and then list some of the things that it's used as now, that's.
I'll get, I'll get that together and, uh, send it to you, Don, or, uh, Chuck, or both of you?
I guess both. Chuck, Chuck will put it into the master. I don't want, I, I'm purposely not marking anything up on here because I don't want two masters out there.
Okay.
Well, and, and to be honest with you folks, I, I am not modifying the document. I am only making notes in our meeting minutes of what happened. And then, Don, if you want to separate it afterwards into an appendix or something like that, I have no problem with it. But, you know, I'm, I'm trying to keep up with everything and and I didn't want to monkey around with the document itself since we have it set as, um, as a benchmark using the June 6th version.
Okay. Okay. As long as we capture the things we want to change, it's okay. We, we put them together later, that's not a problem. Okay, stormwater management, this is one that got over my head pretty fast.
Probably, probably needs to be updated.
Yeah. Who, who, what entities like the owner of this whole topic?
Well, I know that the zoning board, uh, reviews stormwater management for any of its applications.
Right.
To get a zoning permit, uh, the zoning officer reviews the need for stormwater management on the site. And this normally would come in to pay for larger developments more so than a, a private home doing modifications. But if a, a new development went in like yours did, Don, they had to go through the whole stormwater management, uh, process and verification.
Yeah.
How about if somebody was gonna build like one or two houses, Pete? You still would need the stormwater management even for that, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, to a degree, yeah.
Yeah. You can't have runoff into the street. You have to, you know, line the perimeter of the construction site. Uh, you have to cover over, uh, sewer vents in the streets. So all of that is addressed, uh, by the zoning officer.
No, maybe this is another scenario where if they're the ones that are closest to administering the date, you know, maybe they should read this to make sure there's not anything different. Doesn't matter.
And, and again, this comprehensive plan is an overview.
Yeah, so maybe it's okay as is.
So if I said, this is so, this is something that, uh, is, uh, used quite heavily with the zoning commission?
Not just the zoning board, I think, uh, planning board too, planning commission.
The engineer, I was gonna say, it would be ni, it would be nice for, uh, a representative from zoning to have a look at this section.
So I'm looking at the, uh, the Delaware River South Act 167, Stormwater Management Plan. When you Google that, you come up with Bucks County. Uh, that's a Bucks County act, if you will. And, uh, I could look into whether the, there's any updates there. Uh, I'll let you know what I find. I'll dig into that a little bit.
Okay. That'd be good.
Delaware River South Plan. Yeah, it looks like the date of that plan is still October 2004, so that hasn't been updated, as far as I can tell.
Most important paragraph is the last paragraph, because that's what they really do, right? Make sure they, so, you know, any new development applications, it's reviewed.
It, it may be worth in paragraph one, two, three, paragraph four, the, you know, early in 2000, the last line says, "Yardley Borough has had a representative on the watershed advisory planning committee." We should verify whether that's still true.
Is that a, again, a Bucks County thing or the watershed advisory planning committee? I guess it is.
Okay, that's worth checking.
See what I can find out.
Paula might know about this watershed, uh.
Advisory.
Advisories, yeah.
Yeah, I know they got a study going on now that they got a grant for that, uh, Carolyn Thompson's husband is, is doing because he had to come get permission from us to put all kinds of sensors in the Brock Creek to measure flow and they're doing a whole watershed study right now.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the country club. This one was pretty detailed. I assume all this detail went in here to basically warn people that if you're thinking about putting houses in there, there's lots of hurdles to get over. Is that why they put all this detail in here? Anybody?
Yeah, too.
Of course, I don't know if the, if the other amenities like the swimming pool and tennis courts are still being used. And didn't the restaurant shut down or did that open up again?
No, it shut down. I don't know if they ever had a swimming pool there. I don't think there ever was, or tennis courts either, for that matter.
I think this was just indicating that it wasn't allowed use, that, that if they had decided they wanted to do that, they could. That's how I read it.
Yep. It's permitted use.
Yeah. Does anybody have reason to believe any of these other rules and density and all that have been tampered, tampered with, have been, uh, modified at all in the last few years or odds are that's all still in play?
No, they, uh, geez, they did do something with, uh, the zoning around the golf course. Remember when they were trying to do that overlay, Pete?
Yeah, he, he tried to do, get something through, right? I don't think anything.
But I think they, they did do something with the golf course part of it. Ruddle was working on that.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they, and I don't know how that ended up, if anything came of it or not.
I don't remember any ordinance being passed changing any zoning up there.
Yeah, didn't. He had, he was proposing to. He, he had a, he had something in there, I remember, such that it would make it even harder and harder to uh, do anything up there.
Well, the, I think the intention was to buy the land use rights, allow them to keep the property, but the land use rights would be purchased by the borough. So we would determine how that land could be utilized.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right.
I don't remember that ever coming to fruition.
It didn't. It got all, yeah, embroidered in the whole Reading Avenue thing and.
Right, yes.
I think the intention was probably good, but
It would have been very expensive.
But the cost is, yeah.
They were throwing numbers around of, you know, a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
You know, half a million, million dollars, so.
Guys, hang on for just a second. I'll be right back.
Let's keep going.
I mean, the odds are this is probably still all pretty close to. I mean, the odds are this is probably still all pretty close to. College and Reading Avenue, those are the two only accesses, right?
Well, there's no access from college to the.
Oh, that's true, you're right.
Hey, guys.
Yes.
If I may, just jump back to page six, borough objectives.
Back, back to where?
Right there on the screen, you see the paragraph that says borough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I caution you guys to read that carefully? Because this, what happens is a developer will look at this comprehensive plan and say, look, the comprehensive plan says this. And we want to do this because it's in the comprehensive plan. So just the wording on that should be really carefully looked at.
What's your, what's your thinking there, Pete, that I'm not seeing it?
Expansions, expansion of permitted land uses to further support ongoing golf use. What does that mean?
Okay, if that element occurs.
Probably a swimming pool, maybe, the tennis.
I think that's what it means, is if, if they want to change some of the layout or do some improvements up there that help the golf course, or either facilities or other changes. They'll consider doing things that enhance the golf.
They've also sold off some pieces to enhance the golf course, you know, so.
They have sold it for private, they made homes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, to raise some money to, they, they sold off about eight lots.
And have they been developed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so a long time ago then?
Four, five years ago.
Yeah, not so long ago.
And they actually came before the planning commission on that.
Okay.
Right. Pete, are you thinking that expansion of permitted land uses could potentially be interpreted to mean higher density residential zoning?
Yes.
That's what I thought you meant.
And I can. Expansion of permitted uses could mean anything.
Yeah, could mean anything.
Kind of says to support the use of the ongoing golf use.
Yeah.
Well, to make it economically viable, potentially.
Right, so they, they may take, what is it, an 18-hole golf course?
Right.
They may turn around, make it a nine-hole golf course and sell off the rest of it for putting individual homes right on the course.
Yeah, you're right, and someone could argue that that would enhance the golf use.
So I'm just, just a flag to, to consider the wording on that a little more carefully and, and maybe a little, little less broadly.
Yeah.
Just take that sentence out, really.
Exactly, that's what I would say too, Bob, obviously just drop that sentence, what do you need that in it?
Yeah, and let the chips fall where they may when the time comes, but it's not doing any favors. For those of us that are interested in the open space value.
So what, to cut off the, to further support ongoing golf use?
Last sentence.
So.
I'd take the whole last sentence off, yeah, starting at in combination with permanently, or to the end.
Although I, you know, it doesn't take it off the table, the borough could still negotiate a permanent preservation in exchange for, but we don't need to open the door to the possibility by including it in the comp plan.
Right. All right, let's keep moving down then.
Thanks, Pete.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
This is still talking about the golf course though, right?
Yeah, it's just laying out, here's all the obstacles that.
Well, they're, they're missing the main, they're, they're talking about traffic and they don't even mention Reading Avenue itself.
That's true, that is.
Well, I think they would consider Reading Avenue to be a primary street.
Right, but if it was gonna be a traffic impact assessment, it would have to include that, right, have to.
Yeah, it wouldn't have a choice, it would have to.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to, you could always add Reading Avenue to this.
Just add it in there.
Just add it in.
Just add it, it doesn't hurt anything, yeah.
You know what would probably happen, any developer would want to have an access on the college also.
Yep.
And at that point, it necessitates a light, you know, with that, with the school there and, and having all that, the big development there.
Actually, you know, who would want it more is the, is, is emergency services.
Maybe them too, yeah, I don't know, but it's, this came up before about getting lights on that corner already, there were issues about it, you know?
On the corner at the firehouse, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that can be a tough turn at times to get out of there.
Yeah, yeah, and if they put an access to a big housing development out of the college, that would load up that intersection quite a bit.
True.
There was talk during the TOD that light would, a light study would have to be done at College Avenue.
Yeah.
Now, up at, Don, up at your place, you put in what, 100 or 63 homes?
Yeah.
Yeah, 63 homes, and this golf course, if I remember right, can handle maybe 115 or 118 homes under its current zoning.
Okay.
I remember right, and we don't have a light down at your house, at your development.
I know, when it came before the planning commission, were you, did you guys recommend, did you guys have any opinion on that, do you remember? Was it talked about?
Yeah, there was always a, there was always a slight distance problem there coming out of that driveway, but, you know, we, we talked, I remember talking about that.
I think, I think, Bob, if you remember, they, they, they didn't feel there'd be a light there because there'd be no real steady impact or timed impact on the traffic because they were predicting all these people would be empty nesters and retired people, and there really wouldn't be that many trips.
Right.
So they didn't feel, you know, there weren't gonna be any kids in there, are there any, by the way, Don?
We have zero, well, there's a few kids in private school, a couple, but we have zero in the Pensbury School District.
Okay.
Ouch, all that tax money for zero kids.
But even that lived there, I mean, it wasn't age restricted, but.
No, I know, no.
They predicted there would, I think they did predict maybe six, up to six kids or something out of the whole development, but.
That's about it, yeah.
Yeah.
And since it doesn't, since it's only, it's self-contained, it's only one way in and out, you know, you don't have through traffic issues. You know, if something developed at the golf course, there would be lots of through traffic shortcuts and stuff like that going on.
Well, the other consideration with the golf course was if there was, let's assume, even though you could do up to 118, let's say that they had 100 homes. If you, at the golf course, you had four egresses, if I remember right, and we, we would determine that you could not have one, but you would have at least two on Reading Avenue egresses and two on college, so that everybody wouldn't be coming out at the same road all the time. So you'd be, you know, maybe 25% would go one way, 25 would go towards the mall, when, when the road was open. 25 might go down Main Street, so there really wasn't a concern that that many new cars would be leaving all at one time out of that golf course, so the, the light probably would not be needed.
What about sewer and sewer capacity and stuff, is that an issue? Or is that not an issue in our borough?
Well, it usually is.
Yeah, but with the new plan that was put in, was it the 537 plan, I think it was? I thought there was a, plans in there for a new, a new run right down College Avenue past the golf course.
Really?
They're gonna dig up the road again?
Well, I thought there were anticipated capabilities if the need ever arose. It's, it's on paper that it could be put in, if I remember correctly, and again, we can ask the sewer guys, but if I remember right, the, the plans were to have the ability to do that, or the okay and clearance to do it, if it was necessary.
I guess they set, they kind of addressed that down on the secondary conditions here, considerations, available wastewater facilities, et cetera. So you guys believe, think we should keep this level of detail in here around the golf course?
There's no reason to take it out.
Yeah, I guess not, yeah.
It, the, the, I think it protects us more.
Yeah, you're right. This municipal boards and commissions, a lot of this information in here is on the website and the little blurbs talking about each of the different, you know, hearing boards and members and all that stuff. I don't know, should we have Paul clean this up for us? Or do we know all the answers to all these different committees and stuff?
Seven years, four years, I believe, the underneath planning commission, it meets on a second Monday of each month. We could change that.
It, it is changed to Thursday in here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we need to have this in the comprehensive plan, just, just as a reference. Do we need, you know, I don't know if anything has to be updated, though. I think we're the only one who changed our day.
Okay, everybody else is the same, I was, I was thinking maybe in this first, the ad hoc committees, you know, like Totlot, Old Stable and Butwell Park, is that really, is that really still a committee now, or was that just formed when they created the thing, you know what I mean?
It, it was formed as an ad hoc in order to develop the playground, but that committee isn't, doesn't exist, to my knowledge anymore.
Right, so that's the kind of thing, like, something like that probably should come out, you know?
I guess that's why it was bad hawk.
Yeah, okay, I see. But there may be some other ones that are in there now, I mean, aren't they, some of these, uh, what's the one that like did the mural and stuff? What committee is that?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, we, we may just want to add the new ones.
Yeah, exactly. The ones that are in here.
How about if I just say, we'd like to have Paula review these?
Yeah.
Yeah, catch us up.
Yeah, and I'll bounce them against the website too, see. There's more on the website or less.
Yeah, item number 10 is no longer exist.
Yeah, telecommission advisory board, yeah, that's, that's one I didn't recognize, yeah, exactly. Could somebody help me, what's a vacancy board do?
Yeah, well, not much, I guess. Has one member meets as.
Is that like a floater to replace on another board, or no?
Oh, maybe.
That's what I was wondering.
If my understanding is that if council member resigns, then I believe it's, Brian Welsh was on the vacancy board at one time, but he's consulted for the replacement, when they.
The interim decisions. Before someone is appointed to fill the spot, you mean?
Yeah, I think that they, he, the vacancy board assists with filling the vacancy for a, a council member.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Do you need the same thing for replacing a, a planning commission member?
The process for that is that I had spoken with Paula, and then she gets together with Carolyn Thompson and if I remember right, Kim, and then they advertise for volunteers.
And, and I might say, if any of you guys know anybody that would be interested or qualified, I think it's good to be proactive and ask them, you know, and.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and get them. Because otherwise you never know what you end up with.
Hey, you know, I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to digress, but I do want to bring up a question, because we've had it before with Scott. How, how many meetings, or have we heard from Stacy, or, or what's the story with that?
Are, are you referring to Stephanie McCann?
Stephanie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there is no protocol, you know, written down, but I, I do believe it might be worth, I, worth having a conversation with Paula because it has been a number of months with no, no correspondence. Although I, I do believe her term will be up at the end of the year.
Perfect.
You can double check with me on that.
That quick?
Well, I believe she was filling in for.
Yeah, I think, yeah, she filled in for Scott, so filled out the remainder of his term.
Correct, and if I remember correctly, his term was up at the end of this year.
Well, on the website, it says 2022, next to her name, but.
Twenty-two, okay.
But I don't know if that's correct or not.
Because, I mean, unless, I, I know I missed a few here and there, but I think I've only met her once. And it was like one of her first meetings.
Right, me too, only once, so yeah.
Yeah, no, she's been AWOL, and if Carolyn and, and crew are going to the trouble, they might just as well broaden their search and so who, who approaches Stephanie with the idea that she's?
Well, I do think as a matter of courtesy, we should reach out with, again, with, you know, phone calls and, and emails, and maybe even have Paula simply send an email to her and asking her intentions. I, I would hate to cut anybody's knees out from under them, I think it's appropriate, we asked, asked the question and to see if she's interested in continuing or not.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate that, I mean, I, I mean, I know, Pete, you had reached out to Scott. Was it, or was it Matt?
Both of us.
We both did. We, I've also reached out to, to Stephanie. But I, I think it's time that maybe a decision should be made and Paula should be able to. But I I think it's time that maybe a decision should be made and Paula should be able to maybe address her. Real quickly with an email, phone, the borough manager.
Uh, should I put that in our meeting in in the minutes?
Right, I I would, well, I'm sorry, I'm just a resident. I'll stand, I'll stand down.
Well, no, wait a minute, we haven't accepted your, I unless I missed something. I thought that while you had submitted your letter of resignation, we haven't officially accepted it yet, so you are technically still. A member of the commission.
Well, actu- actually, because the resignation was put in. It's, it's official. Because, you know, borough management has acknowledged it. But in any.
Well, we're trying to give you the benefit of doubt.
Yeah, if if it were me, I would make a a personal attempt to get in touch with her.
Uh, before we put anything in the minutes, I kind of agree.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'm gonna not put anything in.
Yeah, what what I'll do, since I'm acting for a month there. I'll reach out to her too, and and this is obviously for everybody, in January is when we have to have our reorganization meeting anyways, so. Um, where we decide who's the officers, et cetera, so that. Under the guise of that, it's very extra important that if you can attend and. You know, push it that that's, you know, our January first kickoff meeting is an important one where we restructure the group. Um, so. Maybe that'll spur one way or another, uh, action.
Hmm.
But. I'll talk to Paul, too, I'm sure Paul's been down this path before with other committee people who, uh. Who, uh.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's not the first time it's happened.
Chuck can tell you, if if you don't show up, you'll be made secretary, so.
That's true. That's right, I could threaten her with that.
Yeah, but at least, at least being secretary, I I've already had, I've already got an assigned role now. Um, Pete, real quick. Thank you, what what's the Legion post number, three seventeen, or?
Yeah.
And, uh. Do we want to also, uh, I I'm sorry, are we down there already, I I'm bouncing between a bunch of screens. Uh, yeah, so we're at that area, um, should, as I mentioned in the notes side, should we mention about the ladies auxiliary?
I. I- in my opinion, we we're very strongly encouraging advertising the ladies auxiliary as well as as Sons of the Legion. Sons of the American Legion, because all three of them operate out of that building.
Then I think it would be prudent to add it into our.
Sure, doesn't hurt.
Um, service organizations, I'll need it back over here.
This may be another one, too, that, uh, I think we should run by Paul, because there may be a couple. Uh, maybe you guys know them all, I don't, I don't know if there may be something else that needs to be in here.
Well, what if Yardley is not in Yardley anymore? Well, neither is Martha Washington Garden Club, but, uh. Knights of Columbus aren't here, I, you know, I don't.
Yeah, we are.
We're on here.
Number six.
Where are they in Yardley?
Oh.
They, they.
All right, what was the one above it, I I, oh, the Friends of Animals, Hope for Animals, where is that?
No idea.
Yeah, I thought that at, um. Saint Ignatius was in Lower Makefield.
Yeah.
It is.
Sorry, Chuck.
Ah. You know what else we should put in here is that the yard, somewhere fits in, that we have the farmer's market here in Yardley now.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Three hundred people will show up there on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Even in the rain.
Maybe we go back up and, you know, where we're gonna break out the, uh, community center, maybe back up in there, because it's not a service organization. It's, let's see. Not boards and commissions.
And actually, the, um. Where did it go? The. Artists of Yardley, I I'm sorry, I was typing, but Artists of Yardley aren't there either, aren't, aren't in Yardley anymore either. They're up at the Madison Farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Matt's point.
We should take them out. But maybe when, when we're way back up after Places of Worship, where we're gonna break out this Yardley Community Center. Maybe, maybe that's where we put this one, because it's kind of a, the farmer's market little.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, we could do that, although I don't know, taking out Artists of Yardley, because, you know, Friends of the Delaware Canal aren't in Yardley either. They're in freaking Doylestown, you know, I mean, in, uh, New Hope, and, uh, so.
Oops, I'm sorry, I lost my spot.
But they're active in the borough periodically, right?
Yeah, so is the Artists of Yardley, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe leave it in.
Yeah.
I I I'm okay with it, yeah, I I that's fine, I, uh, actually, in my notes, I only got to the part, uh, I'm just gonna say. Or should I say, should we review slash remove, uh, organizations as necessary, or? Or not even do that, just say about adding the, uh, identifying the Legions, Lady Auxiliaries, and Sons of the Legion. I personally would rather just a- add the Ladies Legions, Ladies Auxiliary, and Sons of the Legion.
That makes sense, Chuck, as I read that first sentence about the following nonprofit service organization, you know. Uh, we do benefit from these organizations, uh, they may not be resident. In the borough, uh, with their headquarters, but they participate in the community.
Well, then, you know, uh, i- if that's the case, I I would respectfully also, um. Say that, you know, the Yardley Knights of Columbus, um, have been marching in the Yardley Christmas Parade. For over a decade, and during high water events. They've mobilized to help the neighbors down in in, uh, River Mar and other areas, not only through, uh. Um, you know, helping they, uh, gut out their houses, but also bringing food. And, um, uh, you know, other supplies, uh, to people. Um, after high water events.
I personally don't think it hurts to leave them in there, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Viable entity, you know, only take out the ones that aren't really functioning anymore, if there are any in here.
Right, um. A service organization volunteer. Does that include our auxiliary police force?
I would, I would leave police, auxiliary police under police force.
Yeah, because it it gives you the whole picture of.
Because it's like, I I mean, ultimately, it's a subset, it's not just. It 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 has a different, in my opinion, has a different, um, uh, level of significance. And would be closer tied to the actual police and EMS.
Speaking of which. Are they listed in here? The Fire Department and EMS?
Oh, yeah, they're way, way back at the beginning, we went over them.
I saw the Police Department, I don't remember seeing the Fire Department.
Oh, yeah, it was in there, yeah, I'll show you.
It was in there.
We just went through it fast, because I didn't think, well, there was much changes to it, so there's police, uh. Emergency Services. Fire Protection Services.
Mention fire. But it doesn't mention fire protection.
Yes, it does.
No, it does, there's, there's a paragraph. Yeah. Keep going up.
Thank you.
Talks about the volunteers and. Where the stations are and all that.
When we were talking about, uh, cutting off Stony Hill Road there. We were talking.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, we've reached the end of chapter five. That's pretty good, we got through a whole chapter.
All right, it's great.
Yeah. Um, did we list on, on the, uh, services, those who help out with the canal? You know, opening up the, the locks, and I'm not sure which group does that.
We don't have a group anymore at the time that I'm aware of anymore.
There's the, uh, the Friends of the Delaware Canal is listed there, but I'm not sure that's the same group you're talking about.
Yeah, they don't.
Not the Delaware Riverkeeper, that that has nothing to do with it.
We, we don't have that right now.
So nobody, you don't even have a key, Matt?
Yeah, I do have the key. I I do. But the, but the state comes down and opens it and drains it every time there's a threat of rain. You know, it was better when we had our own, uh, we were taking care of it ourselves. Because when it quit raining, we'd close the, the, the lock, you know? But now they just let it stay open and let it go empty. And, uh.
Yeah.
And that's a shame, really, the fish go out and everything.
Yeah, all the money they spend on stock and trout and.
Yeah, they let them run out. Like a week later, they let them all out, and, uh.
Yeah.
And that's the way they seem to want it, they don't seem to want to. Have the local control of, uh, locals control the lock. You know?
Okay, um, oh, I I personally think this is a good stopping point for tonight.
Yeah, it is.
And, uh. Our next meeting is, uh, January fourteenth. And that'll be, you know. Assuming we have no one who's presenting in front of us, that'll be reorganization, so we decide who's gonna do what slots. And then, uh. Let's do some pre-reading of chapter six and start diving into that if we don't have other things to come up.
Good.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a good plan.
You know, I just want to alert you all, tonight is a meteor shower and fireballs, too, in the skies. Starting around nine thirty.
Really? Wow. It's it's to the north, I assume, right?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Go take a look.
Yeah. All the more reason to, do I call, anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, hang on just for a second, uh, conducting our, um. What are, what are we doing for next meeting? Did you say?
Reorg.
Next, next meeting will be the reorganization, so when we decide who's gonna be, have what office positions. And then, uh. Um, and then, uh, if we have no. Uh, people. To review, we will, uh. Plans to review, then we'll attack chapter six.
Good deal.
Okay, I I think I've got everything. Um, I would therefore make a recommendation that we adjourn, uh, for us to adjourn.
You have a second?
You don't really need it, Don, you can adjourn the meeting without a motion.
Okay, good, sorry. Let's adjourn.
And you know, the wild thing is, last meeting, we adjourned it at nine thirteen, and then it's now nine fourteen, so. We're doing pretty good, guys.
All right.
Um, Pete, thank you again for all your service and all your help. Uh, we really appreciate everything that you've done for us, and, uh. Folks, uh, I I hope, uh, Matt, you, and and everyone has a wonderful Hanukkah and good Christmas. And hopefully, a much, much better twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, let's get rid of this.
Absolutely. Well, hey, guys, I I'll mistone this with you guys, I really will, but, uh, my, I'm only a phone call away.
Right, feel free to.
Well, you can always find us on the phone.
You can always hit us on Zoom, too.
That's right.
Thanks, guys.
Lord knows we'll be here for a while.
Thanks for everything, Pete, really appreciate it.
No problem.
Likewise.
Take care, guys.
Good luck to you, God bless.
So long, everybody, have a good holiday.
Thank you, you too, Matt, we'll see you, guys. Rich, Don, take care. And Don, I'll be sending, I'll be, uh, taking a look over this and then send you my, my rough draft.
Yep, sounds great. Okay.
Very good, have a great holiday, guys, we'll see you later.
All right, bye.
All right.